Okay, let's call me in order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. Any amendments to the agenda?
No, sir, no committee.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from September 30th.
I will motion to approve the minutes from September 30th.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any errors, additions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Department have reports. Looks like you.
Yeah, I was expecting the chief, but I'll hold down the fourth for now. I'll start with a little bit of communication. The Fairhaven Grade School would like to thank the town for allowing them to do their festival on the green. I hear it was, unfortunately, it was out of town, but I heard it was a very good turnout this year. So they said, "Thank you." From the police department, the police had five arrests over the last two weeks, 74 traffic tickets or municipal violations, 71 written warnings, one parking violation, we had two car crashes, zero overweight permits in the last two weeks, and they've done 10 sets of civilian fingerprints for employment since the last meeting. Run down from my office and from Public Works, roadside, the crew's been doing some roadside mowing and grading. If you were up on Scotch Hill or up on Dump Road, you saw they finished up the shoulders. The shoulders look like they turned out pretty good. Right now, they're moving into fall cleanup, so you'll see the guys out cleaning up, opening up those storm drains, and the guys in the cemeteries are cleaning up around the cemetery. We're getting ready for the snow to fly. We want to give the town and the select board a heads up. There is, we do, we did find a broken sewer line on Fourth Street, over here closer to Conarvin. They're going to do that dig on Thursday, so we'll wait for the school buses to go through, and then they'll shut the road down and start digging. They wanted me to let the board know and let the town know that they're still very appreciative of the new facility and are taking care of it, as well as their equipment, so that's been something they prioritize lately. And thank you to Doug Wood and Mr. Greeno. They've, they're coming up on the end of building our new salt shed. I talked to Dougie today, and he said he has maybe two more days of work before it's complete, so, I don't know if that's accurate, but that's what I was told. If you were in the, I've had a couple people mention, but we strung a few lights up in the park just to, just to give it a little, a little something. We're probably going to leave those up until after the new year, just for the holidays. So, they're LED, so if anybody complains that, "Hey, you're drawing down the power," it's so minimal. It's not going to impact the bill at all, or hardly at all. And the outlet, so we all know where the outlet property is, on Prospect Street, Dill Outlet. We were working with FEMA to take that piece of property out of the flood zone, which we did last week. We finally got FEMA to sign off on that, so that property can now be developed. We put homes on it.
Out of flood.
Flood zone, flood zone. So I'll be working with Peter Schneider, who's helping with the factory down the street. I'll be working with him and the state of Vermont, see if we can't get some, what they call missing middle funding to put a couple homes up over there. And that, that's what I got for you.
With the chief coming in, do we want to have anything?
I hit the highlights, but I just give off the numbers.
Steady two weeks. We had five arrests in the last two weeks. We are at 97 for the year. 74 traffic tickets, we're at 1807. 71 warnings. One parking violation and two crashes. We did 10 sets of civilian fingerprints. I gave you a list of highlights. We're still doing a lot of foot patrols. We've been getting complaints of some people sleeping in the hallways on some of the 89 and, 89, 85, and 15, so I have them going in there at night. We're trying to address that issue. Joe had mentioned that Officer McDermott's entering his seventh year, and part-time Officer Craig Watts is starting his fifth, and that's pretty good length of service. We're at 257 calls in the last two weeks, calls for service, and we're at 4265 for the year. I think that's all I have.
Does the board have any questions for the chief or Joe?
I have one for Joe. How's our fire hydrant? Is every one of them in operation now?
No.
No?
No, there are still a few that need repairing, but we picked away at it. We painted some, and then we, the one up here on North Main, and that might have been Fourth Street. We got that fixed this year, finally. So, yeah, there are still some that need repair.
Something that we could get, maybe prioritize a little more on, if we can?
We pick away, yeah. We get it when we can. Like, we painted some and we fixed some.
And I also have one other quick question. Remember, we painted left-turn-only lanes at River Street and Liberty Street a couple years ago, and they worked well for a long time. They're a little faded now, and now people are getting stupid again. Very stupid. I just think that should be a priority also.
Chief, you have?
I have a question for chief. You said people are sleeping in certain addresses. Are they, like, right here in the main?
Apartment buildings.
Apartment buildings?
Trying to do foot patrols in those because we think it's the same one or two people. They found spilling the building.
Now, do, oh, so they're homeless, they don't have a place to actually go, so wherever they find a spot that's warm, they're going to lay down?
Well, today's complaint was 85, but I know we found the same person in 15, we found the same person in 89.
So if the same person's doing it, what are we going to do to try to keep preventing that from happening?
Well, the property owner, two of them have signed no trespass orders, so 85 will be the next one. They're trying to get ahold of landlord. I talked to the property manager about getting authorization to sign a no trespass order, and then we could arrest them for trespassing if they were caught in the hallways. That's the only recourse that we have. The unfortunate thing is if that person was trespassed for the building, doesn't prohibit them from going to apartment A. We can't stop that. The landlord can't stop somebody from visiting, but he can stop them from sleeping in the building, in the hallways.
Is this person's address here in Fairhaven, so they?
Okay. Any other questions for the chief or Joe? Hearing none, let's move on to old business, accepting the new zoning regulations.
So the board had a public hearing at the last meeting to take input from our residents. I don't think, I don't think there was any input from residents. So at this meeting, after having received that wealth of feedback, the board then makes the motion to accept the zoning regulations as it was written, and then it becomes your new, the new law of the land.
So we know what we're doing. Do I have a motion to approve the updated Fairhaven zoning regulations as written?
I'll make a motion to update that.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Luci, second it. Any, we know what we're doing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Nothing under new business, so we're going to go to item eight, budget review. Want to walk us through, I see here's some handouts, first discussion.
Yes, sir, this is your first look at the proposed fiscal year 27 budget?
Yeah, in our mailbox.
Okay.
You should have, you should have two spreadsheets, looks like this. One is Public Works, the other one is your general fund, which encompasses everybody else, except the water and sewer. Public Works will be in at the next meeting to talk to the board about their proposal, but just in your packet, you have a sheet that looks like this. It's our highlights, and I will give you just a brief, a brief rundown. We met a few weeks ago, and I asked the board what they, what they wanted to see in their budget. And if I remember right, what I took away from that was, we don't want to see an increase over 3%, but we wanted to see some added funds to our infrastructure, particularly roads. So what you see here is the Public Works Department did get an increase. They're almost, they're at 9.5% increase for DPW, while everybody else total got less than 1% increase. That includes fire, police, my office, everybody. Paving was increased by $61,000. The original increase was over 100, but there was no way I could cut any more funds out of the, of the proposed budget, so we had to cut back on the paving, though there's still an increase. We did see an increase in salt, so you'll see a bump there, and we had to bump up fuel for the, for the new building. We added 12K to that because of operating costs for that, for that new garage. Transfer station, we saw a big bump in our cost to deal with our garbage, particularly the hauling fees went up. That was a 35% increase, so $7,000. It turns into money fast.
What's, what's the norm on that? Well, you said it went up. Where'd it go up from? Would it be this one?
Um...
You said it went up, so obviously it's...
It went up 7,000. I'd have to, let's take a look and see here.
Let's see what it says here.
Hauling fees were at 20,000. We had to increase to 27.
That's a big increase for one year, isn't it?
Yeah, that's, that's why I was in awe of it.
We signed a new contract this year, so they were able to increase that. The other things to note, county tax went up. That was a 36% increase, which is only $5,000, but again, it starts to add up. Where we found money to cut, which is, which is not popular, but our reserve funds have been completely zeroed out. There's no money in there for our reserves. Economic development has been zeroed out. Legal services have been reduced by 25%. Hydrant replacement, we cut that by 71%. We did have some, we did pay down some debt over the last year, so we were able to see a savings of 18% there, $20,000, $21,000. Fire department saw a reduction of 20% on their air packs. Tree removal was reduced. Outside ditching was reduced, and small fees for Public Works was reduced. And those are your budget highlights.
And just so we understand, the process starting, this is, gives us like a starting point, is what you're, what you're going to be looking at and you're seeing for the first time, so you'll have time to go and look at every line item. Starting next week, I see there's a meeting scheduled. You handed out for the, who's going to be, DPW is up first next week?
Yes, sir, DPW is up first.
In two weeks.
Okay.
This is the date that they're having, at the 28th?
Yeah, it's our meeting, our regular select board meeting on the 28th. And, and the thing that we will be doing is, they'll be coming in, talking about what they need, why they, why they need it, and the thing we have to probably keep in mind is, we just figuring into this budget cycle, the reason you are seeing the key reductions, some of that. Just want to remind everyone, this year, we negotiated both our DPW and our, our police contracts. They're five-year contracts, and there's, the increases are all being reflected in, in this budget, so...
This is the, this is the big piece to bite off this year for the, for the salaries. Most of our staff got a pretty good raise. In the, in the out years, it's a, it's a, it's less of a raise.
It starts with a big raise, and it goes down to, I think, in the out years, to the 2% range. But again, and also, you look at, this is what our budget was. We even negotiated and brought two different contracts, and plus, we want to do more paving and everything, so just, if you're thinking, there's no way you're going to stay level. And so, so that the increase isn't too great, some things are going to go up and some things are going to come down, is all, when, when you're looking at it and you're putting those numbers together. Any other questions from board members or comments about just the rough overview of where we are?
Couple line items I'm curious about, but I can save that conversation for later, if that serves us better, yeah? Awesome.
Okay.
If I could make one last point. On the very bottom of your, of that colorful schedule, it says January 6th, oh, it says 2023 and 2024. So, January 6th, 2025, I'm sorry, 2026, that's the last possible day for us to get this budget approved, and then get everything out to our printers, so that way the books can go out to our residents. This process has to end, like, we can't, it can't, there's no kicking the can this time around. So each, each of the five meetings does require, it's, it's a decision point each of those five meetings. If we can't go past that January 6 deadline, otherwise, we're out of compliance with the state.
Anything else before we move on? So what we're going to do individually, we're going to take, look at these, prepare to talk, DPW in our next meeting.
And if anybody has questions, please feel free to call. Like, I'm sure there'll be a million things, so...
Just something that, if you're looking at that, I know we have some newer people on the board, sometimes what you might find helpful when you're looking at what's being proposed here, go back and look at your general ledger that you got, that finished out our calendar year at the end of June, and that'll let you see what they're, what we asked for and what we actually used, whether we went over, came in under, or whatever, but it gives you a point of reference to, here's where we are. Sometimes it's nice to go back and say, "Okay, did we, did we use that amount, or did we overspend it?" It's helpful. Okay. Anything else you want to add before we move?
Oops, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Number nine on our budget is two minutes for public comment. I do have some public, which makes me happy, so any comment from our public? Rose?
So I just want to give huge kudos to the committee that did the, has been doing the food frenzy, food truck frenzy, excuse me. This last one was just, it was just so nice. The park was decorated so nicely. It was so just, it was just such a nice event, you know? Very relaxing, very relaxing, very, just, I really got to give a lot of credit, because I wasn't sure, after that first one, I wasn't sure how it was going to work out, and they've just, and I want to give Mike Thorn credit for thinking it up. It's fantastic, I'm looking forward to the next season. I would like to formally request that the funnel cake truck that was next to the fountain be brought back next year, because seriously perfect funnel cakes.
Those were good, Joe.
They were awesome. I had asked for him, I like things crunchy, so I asked him to make mine well-done, and he, it was spot-on. So, I don't remember the name of it, I'm sorry, but...
There was more than one funnel cake?
I don't know, but it was the one next to the fountain.
I missed it.
Any, any other under two minutes for public comment?
I just, just a quick more comment on that. I can actually get my husband to go, to join me, so you know it's a, it's a good time.
Yes, I know about your husband, very nice man.
Okay, parking lot. Anything we need to talk about in the parking lot?
I don't have any updates this time.
As long as we're talking about transfer station in the parking lot, not a huge amount to report on this, but if anyone's been following the recent news about the Rutland County Solid Waste District's ongoing disputes.
Heard about it, but...
So Castleton and Hubbardton are proposing that they might join our Solid Waste Alliance communities. We had our SWAC meeting this week, and the board of the SWAC voted unanimously for that to move forward, so it's not a done deal yet. That's going to go to the public, but I thought I would just give you all that update and encourage you to look into the situation and ask questions if you're, if you're curious, but...
So what does that actually mean? What, they're going to come bring their stuff to us?
They're, they won't bring their stuff to us. Castleton already has their own transfer station, and Hubbardton also uses that same transfer station, but their administrative operations would be consolidated with ours to a certain extent. Not what happens at our transfer station, but the sort of advisory that goes on for all of the member communities of the Solid Waste Alliance communities.
Anything else under parking lot? If not, moving on to roundtable. Back to you, Sam.
Second what Rosie said, it was a great event, and thanks to everyone who had a hand in making it happen. I enjoyed myself, I think everyone I saw there was enjoying themselves, and I look forward to doing it again next year, and I hope we will.
Hey, I just have one question on, about the food truck frenzy. Are local businesses that serve food made aware of what's going on, when it's going on?
Yes, everybody knows.
Everybody in town knows?
Pretty much, yes, all over Facebook. All of us post everywhere, Facebook, Instagram, we talk to them in person.
So you went into the ones downtown and spoke to them?
Sure did, yes.
Okay.
Derby stays open later. The restaurant's down, but Lucy's is open.
Well, okay, should I not bring that up then, or should I make a? I don't know how to...
Right, well, can I, can I jump in?
Please, you know what I'm trying to get at.
Let me, let me jump in the deep. Not, everyone was happy with the food truck frenzy, that, some of, we got some feedback from one of our businesses that felt it took away from business, and they, they, and they, but I don't want it to sound totally negative. They're saying, "Hey, this, this business has been supporting Fairhaven for over 40 years, and now continue to support Fairhaven." I understand, you know, it came with, "Hey, it hurt our business a little bit, it didn't help it, maybe it will in the future." It came with a request that said, "Boy, if you did it Monday or Tuesday versus Wednesday, it would be better for us." And myself personally, from a selfish standpoint, try to go find some food on Monday, most, most places are closed. I, so, so maybe, so it's just, I think they were, at the end of the day, they were just asking, "Could you consider going forward, having, having the food truck frenzy a little earlier?"
Because some of us got earful from the business owner, why, what for, I didn't know until a customer come in and said what was going on. So why, that's why I brought it up. It's nothing against you guys personally, it's just...
Well, when I look at it, anytime you do new things, you know, it's, well, change is, change is a little difficult for some folks, and it takes a little bit to get there. Like, I know, you know, so, it's just, I think we're, all the right people are doing good stuff, and we'll, we'll get there.
See, when we first started talking about the food truck frenzy, and we were talking about it Monday or Tuesday night, when the rest of the places were closed down, I'm not sure who or why it became Wednesday instead of Monday or Tuesday. That's, I don't know that answer, but I would prefer it to be on Monday or Tuesday myself.
Did, let's try to make, the people that have been here 40-plus years, let's try to stand the good graces of our locals.
And I don't want this, and also, the individual was saying, "Hey, look," and we get it if, when you're doing special events like Apple Fest that you heard earlier, or Spring Fling, or Lumberjack, whatever, you always need, the more food trucks, the better, usually. They're not trying to discourage that, they're just saying, "Hey, if you do something that's just pretty much an event around, could you, the food, could you do it? Could you consider doing it?" And so I thought it was good feedback, and they, and the question was asked, "Were, were all businesses aware?" And I, to my knowledge, I said, there was, they were reached out to everyone, now, does that mean we, you got it 100%? I couldn't guarantee that. We're going to miss occasionally, we'll, we'll do better next time.
And that's why I asked the question, was all local businesses made aware? That's why I asked it the way I did.
But I mean, heard nothing, but with the exception of a few, nothing but good things, so...
And I, and I think...
I had a good time.
And I think people need to think out of the box a little bit as far as that goes too, because, you know, just, they were in that timeframe of that particular night, they were unaware of two other ones before that, and they were unaware of any difference in receipts, possibly, maybe, is what I got. Who knows?
That's, that's what we were told.
So it could be just a...
My, my thinking of that is, the more people we get coming into town from any direction, they may see, "Oh, we should try that place next time we come to town."
Yes, I totally agree with that.
You know, so people got to look at that also. And I don't know if everybody does, to be honest with you.
Right. Oh, I do.
I do too, but, I mean, some people I don't think do.
Right, oh, no.
Just food for cop, that's all.
I closed early, I closed early that day.
I think more communication, the more communication we can get out there.
Well, no, but it just, just want to make everybody aware, because these people...
No, well, thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Okay, so now, anything else?
No, I'm all set, thank you, sorry.
Rich, anything?
I can't stress enough, we got to keep trying to do the best we can. Road maintenance is 100% most important. Ditches cleaned, mowing, brush cut back, trees cut back. Let the sun shine in on the roads in the wintertime, makes a big difference. Less salt usage, which makes the salt going in Lake Champlain way better for everybody. Less money that we're spending out there, we're not fertilizing potholes with salt all winter.
Very true.
Cleaning, maintenance of the machinery, most important to save money. We're worried about money, but we can't take care of the stuff that'll save us money. We've got to work that angle way better than we do.
I have a question about that. Is there any kind of preventative maintenance that should be done that's not being done?
So we had an unfortunate incident wherein some salt was left in a piece of equipment that we thought was taken care of, which I believe is leading to this. I have guys that that's all they do is maintain that equipment, sometimes 20, 30 hours a week, which is 60 hours in a pay period. They do an excellent job, and if you look at the receipts in that, you'll see purchases of repair of oil, filters, grease... purchases of repair of oil, um, filters, grease, and his budget line. So we do an excellent job with our maintenance.
No, I'm not just speaking that.
The only thing is, my only thing is, it's the same guys doing that, it's the same guys up, out there cleaning the ditches and cutting the brush, it's the same guys.
Yeah.
And we gotta be aware of that. There's only so many...
Yeah.
So much energy in one body per day.
Oh, I get that, I, I totally understand.
So, they, they can't be everywhere at once, is what I'm trying to tell you.
Okay, nothing else?
No, that's all I have.
Just, it, it made me think when I saw Laura in the back of room here, and you'll see why I'm, I'm pulling in here, is that because, uh, the lights for the crosswalk, we were looking at time in the morning, how are we, how are we doing on, I was gonna ask you when it, and I...
We're struggling, it's, it's no doubt. I, uh, I got the, I got the lights to work, I, I brought them in here and just spent some time. Um, I got them programmed, they're sitting in my office. Um, Nate was gonna get them this week, but just, it's, it just seems like something always happens. So we have that sewer line break that they're gonna fix on Thursday. Um, I sent them a text, asked them, could we get at least that set up this week? Um, we'll see, but I want to make that a priority, 'cause it's been with sixty thousand dollars worth of signage.
And, and I have one other positive thing, uh, the decision, uh, to, with Halloween coming up here, and the decision to close Carnarvon Street down, I thought overall was very well, uh...
Received.
Our, our taxpayers love that saying, yeah, why, why not? So that was a good, uh, that was a good move.
I have a question on that. If you're shutting Carnarvon, you should be shutting all the side streets off, 'cause those cars you're stopping from coming to Carnarvon are gonna be coming down that street.
I don't see how you'd do it any other way, you gotta cut them off, you can't...
With, unless you shut Pelkey right down High Street, Fourth Street, you, you're not accomplishing anything, other than cars are gonna there and not be able to get out. Now they're turning around in the middle of the road.
Totally agree, agree with you, 'cause they're...
Do you have one question I have?
Well, go ahead.
I'm...
I was just gonna say that I, I think when we discussed this at the last meeting, that very point came up, and we thought there was enough signage to indicate that through traffic would not be allowed on those nights to properly sign all of those side streets. Do, do you feel confident that we have the signage available to do that?
I will, in the past, I have not been in favor of it, because it's almost virtually impossible for manpower, and now you're adding for us to do it, and now you're adding trunk or treat in the park on the same night, so I might have to dedicate it.
Trunk or treat, maybe the same night?
'Cause it's up all's on Halloween. What we're gonna do, if you crosswalk back and forth there, so I, I'm concerned that there's not gonna be enough manpower to cover it. And then, we're gonna need DPW to come out and put the signs up and take the signs back down.
That's what I was gonna ask. So when we talk about manpower, in my mind, it would be as simple as a sign at every entrance to that block, or two blocks of neighborhood.
You're gonna, yes, like a normal road closure sign.
Or, or are you envisioning cars posted, or are you envisioning men posted up?
We don't have enough cars, enough men to do that.
Okay.
But what I'm just saying, in, in general, we're gonna need, that part needs to be planned out between us and DPW, on how we're going to shut down every intersection, and then who cleans that up, at what time, do we reopen it?
That, that was gonna be my question, probably would be, be well served to say, from this time to this time, side streets in Carnarvon are closed.
Well, we have a trick-or-treating ordinance, it's five to eight.
Five to eight.
So if you just plan five to eight, or quarter to five, then, then the buddy fifteen, that range, but...
And the concern of someone getting home late from work, of course, you let the person go and have their supper.
And, and the only thing I bring about that is handicap.
That was my next...
What do we do if somebody's mom or grandmother, or even a, a young child, handicap? Well, they can't walk, so, or walk that far, how do they get up and down the street to be able to be part of it?
I see.
And who's monitoring this?
Exactly.
When somebody moves the road up to get in, that's, like I said, there's just a lot of, I think it's a good idea, I just worry about the, there's so many moving parts and so many side streets that you're gonna have to effectively shut off, 'cause, or you just cap it off, uh, Carnarvon is the only street, but you, but the masses of people in my career, you're talking five to six hundred people roaming block by block.
And the second part of my thing is, being Halloween's on a Friday, there's a good chances of football playoff game, whether it be home or away. A lot of these kids and parents around, their kid either plays, or they're big supporters, so that might cut down on a lot of foot traffic that night too. Just an FYI, it just, it sucks that it's on a Friday night, Halloween is, but we don't have to control the day it's on, I just know there's a good chance to be a football playoff game that night for Fairhaven, whether it be home or away, is up in the air still, for the next two weeks, we won't know, but that'll cut down on a lot of foot traffic, because a lot of people support, and where we go, they go, or vice versa. Just throw that out there.
I remember like last year, did we have any, any problems with Halloween last year? It's been pretty, pretty good. So, we may be trying to fix something that don't exist here.
I mean, I think that, I think the concept was well received by the public of trying to do that. I'm just concerned of, if you're gonna do the one street, you gotta do it all, because it's, you're defeating the purpose by just putting blockades here and on that end, because you're gonna, cars are gonna come from everywhere.
Yeah. And I think there was already something sent out saying we're closing it off, am I correct?
We've already communicated Carnarvon being closed.
So, now you...
Did we just make, the point is, did we just make the decision that we're going to also have second to first Pelkey?
I'm just afraid of the handicap aspect of it. I'm afraid somebody's gonna get upset and, or...
I mean, ultimately it'd be nice if you could get even the fire department to come out.
Yeah.
Somebody to staff an intersection. So if somebody shows up, or it's their residence, that they move the...
So they, they move the bear cage.
Let them go to their house, um, that kind of...
But...
That'd be great if we had some volunteers from...
We're running short on time to figure this out, so we'll have to figure it out at some point.
Yeah. That's all, what my concern was, how do we address those other...
I get it.
Joe, do you have any feelings, or?
Um, no.
Okay.
It'll be okay.
We'll make it work, whatever.
It'll make it work. It'll, it'll be fine, and everybody will be extremely pleased.
Exactly. I, I think that, I, I believe we'll have, if we just said we needed, some of them, so, just so our minutes will reflect, and it's also one of them, will we communicating that, uh, from five to eight, Carnarvon? First, was it first Pelkey?
First, second, third, mechanic, fourth, no.
The whole, what is there, four streets there, five streets?
Looking at from the block section between the North Main and Four.
Because you...
Washington, and Carnarvon, Fourth Street, and, and North Park.
Yeah, then you're, that's right, and there's also High Street.
Yeah, High Street, you have, you have another street coming out.
And then you cut down, and it cuts back towards mechanic, and... I'm gonna, ah, I don't know what to say or do on that aspect, honestly.
I think it's worth trying, and if it doesn't work, we'll go back to something else.
And we'll go, okay, that didn't work that well. We, I, I think that everyone appreciates the fact that we're trying to make everyone safe for large numbers of people that are going to be...
Biggest thing is, everybody's gotta be, use their common sense if they have it, and just go very slow and very easy. That's the key.
Yeah.
Good. Anything else? Yes.
I would also like to put out there that perhaps parents should also be paying a little more attention to their children and not allowing them to run out into the street. It's just, it's just a thing, it's a parent thing. Parents should be paying attention.
Thank you.
In all my years of service here, Halloween is probably one of my favorite nights to work, and our calls for service around Halloween-related incidents are very minimal.
That's awesome.
People, we're looking out for everybody.
We don't, generally don't have a problem, we don't have really too many speeding issues, we don't really have any car issues, most people are respectful. Um, again, that could change, but historically, in my time, it's been a very good event. I think people come from other areas, I think they just enjoy the way Fairhaven's laid out. You really have some homeowners that go along out on the side, so...
They do such an excellent job.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna move us along to the, uh, financial reports. Rich is going, has graciously volunteered to take care of that.
I second that.
All right, I think I make a motion to pay the payroll of forty-seven thousand, eight-hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty cents.
Second that?
Seconded by Sam, all those in favor?
Aye. And the general warrant, four-hundred thirty-four thousand, seven-hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents.
Oh, seconded that.
Keith seconded that, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the biggest thing we paid on that was, was that a paving?
Scotchel paving.
Scotchel paving.
Scotchel paving, three-hundred and eighty... Three-hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Uh, and checkbook status right now is minus five-hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five-hundred ninety dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Keith, thank you. Uh, I'll entertain a motion now to go into executive session.
Uh, seconded that.
Well, I, I need something...
I will motion to go into executive session.
Sorry, I thought, I thought he said that.
And I, and I need the motion to include the one VSA...
To discuss the matter, one VSA, three-one-three-A-one leader contract. All right, we'll motion we go into executive session.
We have a second?
All seconded.
Keith seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.